Good evening, everyone. Welcome to USD 305 Board Meeting, March 27, 2018. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, Madam President. There is an addendum to the Personnel Report, and we need to remove the Executive Session for Personnel.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Madam President, I make a motion we accept the agenda as corrected.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. That was Emma and Ann. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried, seven zero. Next is recognitions and presentations with Jennifer Bradford Vernon and Students Superintendent's Excellence Awards this evening.
Good evening. Tonight, we'll be recognizing the Superintendent's Excellence Awards. First, we're going to recognize two students who qualified for Nationals with Business Professionals of America at South High School during the State Leadership Conference. Sue Montoy is their sponsor, and along with the two students, she is unable to attend this evening. Congratulations to Brandon Woodhull Jr., who went to State and placed seventh in Personal Finance Management and eighth in Payroll Accounting, and Connor Talbot Jr., who also went to State. Congratulations. Our next group of awards goes to South High School wrestlers who qualified at State. Kane and Wendell is their coach. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will all the wrestling students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their sponsor? As I call your name, please step toward Dr. Hardy so you can receive your award, and after you've received your award, please walk to the end of the line and remain standing until all the students have been recognized. Parents, please stand if you'd like us to pause so you can snap a photo. Caleb Copeland, sophomore. Caleb placed seventh at Regionals. Carson Ochoa, sophomore. Carson placed eighth at Regionals. Brenner Vogon, senior. Brenner placed third at Regionals and third at State. Derek Sherwood, junior. Derek placed eighth at Regionals. Ethan Jeffrey, senior. Ethan placed sixth at Regionals. Christian Mendez, senior. Christian placed sixth at Regionals. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you?
Outstanding record. Congratulations. Good job. Good job. Good luck.
Next, we will recognize Central High School wrestlers who qualified at State. Shannon Peters is their coach. And will all of the wrestling students, along with Mr. Peters, please sign up next to Dr. Hardy?
I guess he can't hide very well.
Drew Bergoon, junior. Drew had a season record of 38.7 and placed fourth at State.
Donida's got to get a picture.
Taylin Peters, junior. Taylin had a season record of 45 and was a State runner-up. James Morrow, senior. James had a season record of 30.15. Isaiah Harder, sophomore. Isaiah had a season record of 23.22. Levi Sutton, freshman. Levi had a season record of 19.21. Cray True, sophomore. Cray had a season record of 21.20. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations. Congratulations.
We now recognize South High School swimmers who qualified at State. Dustin Bergard is their coach. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will all the swimming students please line up? Paul Armbrust, junior. Paul is a member of the medley relay and the 400 freestyle relay. He swam the 200 individual medley and the 100 backstroke as an individual. Carter Booth, senior. Carter is a member of the medley relay and the 200 freestyle relay. He swam in the 100 butterfly as an individual. Keegan Exline, freshman. Is not here this evening, but he swam in the 100 backstroke as an individual. Trenton Fabrizius, senior. Trenton is a member of the medley relay, the 200 freestyle relay, and the 400 freestyle relay. Isaac Frost, sophomore. Dove to a sixth-place finish. Not here, along with Keegan and Kyle Island this evening because they're at a tennis match. Kyle Island, freshman. Swam in the 400 freestyle relay and the 500 freestyle relay as an individual. And Alec Jeskey, senior. Alec is a member of the 200 freestyle relay. Next page. Thank you. Keaton Munsell, junior. Keaton dove to a first-place finish to win the state championships. Seth Thompson, junior. Seth is a member of the medley relay and the 200 freestyle relay. Brian Taylor, sophomore. Brian is a member of the 400 freestyle relay, and he swam the 100 breaststroke as an individual. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations. Congratulations. Well done.
Next, we recognize the Central High School swimmers who qualified at State, and Dustin Bergard is also their coach. And will all of the Central swimming students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their sponsor? Gage Burmaster, junior. Gage is a member of the 200 freestyle relay and the 400 freestyle relay. Isaac Frost, sophomore. Dove to a sixth-place finish. Not here, along with Keegan and Kyle Island this evening because they're at a tennis match. Kyle Island, freshman. Swam in the 400 freestyle relay and the 500 freestyle relay as an individual. And Alec Jeskey, senior. Alec is a member of the 200 freestyle relay. Next page. Thank you. Keaton Munsel, junior. Keaton dove to a first-place finish to win the state championships. Seth Thompson, junior. Seth is a member of the medley relay and the 200 freestyle relay. Brian Taylor, sophomore. Brian is a member of the 400 freestyle relay, and he swam the 100 breaststroke as an individual. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations. Congratulations. Well done. Good job. Thank you.
Next, we recognize the Central High School swimmers who qualified at State, and Dustin Bergard is also their coach. And will all of the Central swimming students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their sponsor? Gage Burmaster, junior. Gage is a member of the 200 freestyle relay and the 400 freestyle relay. He swam the 200 freestyle and the 100 butterfly individual. Gunnar Holmgren, senior. Gunnar is a member of the medley relay, the 200 freestyle relay, and the 400 freestyle relay. Nick Ross, sophomore. Nick swam the 200 freestyle and the 500 freestyle as an individual. Adrian Ruvalkova, junior. Adrian is a member of the medley relay, 200 freestyle relay, and the 400 freestyle relay. Ethan Schulte, sophomore. Ethan is a member of the medley relay and the 400 freestyle relay. He swam in the 100 backstroke as an individual. Brayden Tony, senior. Brayden is a member of the medley relay and the 200 freestyle relay. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Well done. Congratulations again. Thanks for handling both schools.
Our next group of awards goes to South High School bowlers who qualified at State. Seth White is their coach. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will all the bowling students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their sponsor? Girls' team members. Jordan Van Arsdale, junior. Lauren Lust, junior. Bella Olson, junior. Kinsey Miller, sophomore. Bailey Berry, junior. Allison Nashwick, senior. Stella Justel, freshman. Boys' team members. Dane Van Ada, senior. Kyle Miller, senior. Griffin Peterson, freshman. Dalton Stelter, sophomore. Colter Stelter, senior. Kayden Barry, sophomore. Jordan Anderson, freshman. Andrew Brokner, freshman. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations. Keep up your work. Yeah. Congratulations. Yeah. Good job. Thanks for taking us on.
Our last group of awards this evening recognizes two Central High School bowlers who qualified at State. Joe Wilkerson is their coach. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will the bowling students please line up in the front as well?
They're gone. I think they're busy.
Mr. Showman, would you like to stand in? Principal Showman?
I'm not a very good bowler, though.
Thank you. Kaylee O'Connor, sophomore, and Mirage Bhakta, junior. Congratulations.
Next on our agenda is approval of consent agenda items. Those include minutes of the March 13, 2018 Regular Meeting, Personnel Report, Treasurers' Report, Investment Report, Journal Entries, Approve Incumbents Listings to Safari Montage for the Annual Renewal in the amount of $24,450, to Learning A-Z for License Renewal in the amount of $27,386.30, to Ingenuity Annual Renewal in the amount of $75,000, to ACT Aspire in the amount of $57,915 for the renewal of assessments that will be taken during the 2018-19 school year. Approve Salina Adult Basic Education FY19 Funding Amounts, $101,432 for Federal, $3,043 for Federal Professional Development, and $50,800 for State, for a total amount of Approve Federal Head Start and Early Head Start Continuation Grant Application for a total of $4,797,492, with a 25% match of $1,199,373. Approve State Pre-K Four-Year-Old At-Risk Preschool Continuation Grant Application for a total of 60 children. And approve the Kansas Parents as Teachers Program Continuation Grant Application for a level funding of $79,283, with a 65% cash match of $51,534. Any discussion?
Madam President, oh, go ahead. Go ahead. I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ann.
Emma Doherty second it.
I'm a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion approved, seven zero. Next on our agenda is public forum. If there is anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak, you may do so at this time. I don't see anyone, so we will move to action agenda. And on that is Equity Council Bylaws with Dr. Hardy.
Thank you, Madam President. Over the last several months, and I've been keeping the board up on our efforts, we've been working on creating an entity to address and support equity and diversity within USD 305. Included in this effort was a community conversation made up of 15 community members. Out of that group came a steering committee, and that steering committee has been working over the last several months to develop an Equity Council for USD 305. In that effort, I included a visit to Topeka to learn about the USD 501 Equity Council, and we learned a lot from that trip, as a matter of fact. So the steering committee, using the Topeka Equity Council's bylaws as a guide, converted them and adjusted them to fit our needs, and it became the USD 305 Equity Council Bylaws Document, and that's for your consideration this evening. Before we ask for action, I would like to point out the great folks that gave up their time and effort, and they had a passion for this, and I would just like to recognize those people that are here this evening, the folks that served on the steering committee. Of course, it was myself, and then Shannon Rector, who's the Executive Director of Administration Student Support Services, Jennifer Bradford Vernon, Director of Public Information, and then three of our citizens who felt like this is something that was important to them. They really stood out when we were having our community conversation, and I think passion is a word that fits really well in their effort. So Reverend Barry Dundas from the Trinity United Methodist Church, Brian Fraser, our President of Salina NAACP, and Rena Torres, who is a bilingual assessment coordinator and advocate for CAPS. So I just want to thank those people publicly for their efforts and their time. This is how we got to this point, is all their passion and their support. So, Madam President, with that in mind, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the creation of USD 305 Equity Council so we can serve our students and staff.
Okay, thank you. And thank you again to all of you that participated. I know that this took some time out of your regular schedule to do something special like this, and it's nice that we have it done before the end of the year, and thank you again very much. Do I have a motion? Madam President, Emma Doherty, I make a motion we pass the Equity Council bylaws. Second?
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you. Moving on to discussion agenda, high school pilot schedule for 2018-2019, and I see that Curtis Stevens and Nate Showman are up.
Mr. Showman and I are going to just take you through the presentation, but we also welcome any questions that you have as we go through it, and then if there's some more at the end of it, we'll be happy to help answer whatever we can as well.
For our board members, you should have it on your desktop.
First, I want to start off by just telling you, I hope that the information you're receiving tonight is, you know, the equivalent of, rather than tell you how to build a watch, sometimes people just want to know what the time is. So I'm trying to kind of keep some of that information brief, but also allow you opportunities to give us some questions, too. What I do want to say and acknowledge that the information that is up here is the work of a lot of different people, everybody from just hearing what we're hearing from what our teachers are needing, working with crosstown colleagues at the elementary, middle school level, helping educate one another about the needs and the priorities of the different levels, as well as the support from the district administration. So I want to reach out and thank the NEA members, the teachers, the just getting feedback, getting input, but also hearing what their concerns are and trying to find a solution. And I'm going to quote Dr. Tompkins. Andy Tompkins once said, "When it comes to a budget, you can have anything you want in a budget, but you can't have everything, and a schedule is no different." So as we move through some of the information, just know that this is the, it's not the work of Mr. Showman, it's not the work of Mr. Stevens. It involves a lot of different parties, and just getting some information from them to help try to find a pragmatic solution to some of the challenges we have. So without much further ado, I'll turn it over to Mr. Showman, and he's going to kind of walk you through what the current schedule looks like and what the proposed schedule is.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. So we currently, we're in year two of being on a six-of-seven schedule. So as you see on the screen, it's green and gold, it's maroon and white over at Central, but basically, your odd days, you have four classes. Classes are 93 minutes long. Even days, students are in three classes, and then that second block, the ELO block, we split it in two, and it's essentially, it's our seminar period. Students have an opportunity to work on assignments, collaborate with other students, work with other teachers. Essentially, here's their time where they can get caught up, or get ahead, or seek remediation if they need it. We've been living through this schedule, benefits to it. This allowed us to become more efficient, you know, at a time when our budget was kind of, tons of uncertainty even still now. This allowed us to go through and put some things in place where we didn't have to let people go, and we still could go through and make some changes to the schedule to accommodate bringing on all-day kindergarten, and also, you know, some new CTE programs coming on. But essentially, what you're looking at is that, from a student standpoint, four classes on the odd days, even days, three classes, then an ELO period. What we're looking to propose is going from a six-of-seven schedule to move to a six-of-eight schedule. So teachers would still teach six classes a day. Students, instead now, they would still have ELO, but instead of having ELO every other day, we would have a shorter ELO period every day at the end of the day. Class periods would get a little bit shorter. Instead of 93 minutes, we're looking at about in between 80 and 78, and then students have an extra class that they take. And we'll kind of jump into some of those details and the benefits and the exciting parts with all that. But essentially, what we're doing is looking at keeping the teacher classes the same, where they're all teaching six, moving ELO to the end of the day, and then going into having an extra class period for students for elective purposes. Okay, from, if we're looking at this from number of advantages, but instructionally speaking, if we're going from a 93-minute block to a 78-minute block, we're losing some time, but this does allow us to get a little bit more efficient. What this also does is that, instead of having, you know, uneven planning times, now we have a common plan block on every single day that allows us to get our departments back towards a common plan, and we can also use this 78 minutes, we can split it where we have personal plan time, but also collaborative plan time. And as we're going through and working through our KISA rubrics and working with our leadership teams, this is something that we feel is important, is giving our teachers a better opportunity to plan, to collaborate, to go through student assessment data, but to be able to do it on a more consistent level. Right now, we're trying to squeeze it in the mornings before the school day starts. We get about once a week for about 30 minutes. Conversations are rushed. Here's an opportunity where we can get a little bit more consistent and find a way to get our teachers to work better and work more efficient.
Mr. Showman and I have a height difference, so sorry about that. The proposal also does support career and college readiness on two fronts. This last February at South, we did pilot changing our conference format, and what we really learned about that was the need to look at our advisories and the way they are structured, and understand that it warrants some kind of change. And part of that was conversations I had with the principal at Emporia High School, who has been kind of the flagship school with reference to student-led conferences. And one of the takeaways from the conversation I had with him, he said, "Curtis, what you need to look at is a systemic approach to those conference formats. If you have extremely large advisories and you're trying to pull those students in to have a meaningful conversation with them, it only works if they have a relationship with the person that's facilitating that." And that wasn't a surprise to me. At one point in time, our student advisories are what we call ELOs, which stand for Extended Learning Opportunity, and it's also a seminar period. What stuck out to me the most about it is when I looked at his conference participation rate, being in the 87 percentile, and despite our best efforts to invite parents and to try to kind of copy and paste this student-led conference together with the existing ELO infrastructure that we have, our best efforts still only yielded 51%. So that was a real takeaway for me when we started having those conversations with other schools across the state. So what does that mean? With this proposal, because we have an ELO or a student seminar that is 15 to 20 students instead of currently 36 students, 30 to 36 students, and an ELO that meets every single day instead of one that meets every other day, we're able to leverage and build some stronger relationships. Now, Mr. Showman and I are, you know, planning on working with our staff to see how do we build those home rooms? Do you take basically a fourth of the students and have them be freshmen, a fourth be sophomores, a fourth be juniors, a fourth be seniors, and keep them in four-year cohorts to build that relationship? There's a lot of possibilities and strengths that come with that. But what this proposal allows us to do is to take a very large school, and we call it large, there are schools that are 5,000, but to take a school of 1,000 students and to build a home room, to build a tighter connection, to build a community with the students. And so the stronger students and parent relationship piece is extremely important when it comes to facilitating the individual plans of study, which are noted in our KISA rubrics. The other piece to this that I think is also very powerful, I have, I've watched this district pass a bond issue when other districts across the state weren't interested in doing that, even districts nearby. I've watched this district add programs to help make our curriculum as relevant as possible. And one of the concerns has been, well, can the students still get a liberal education? Can they still take some fine art activities? Can they still be involved in that? With one more course option in the schedule, this is one way to allow that to happen. So that, as we think about that, and what does that mean for early graduation and graduation requirements, we'll have a chance to kind of unpack that. But if students could take one more class in their schedule, and we condense the sizes or the lengths, rather, of those classes to allow that, there are some incredible possibilities that come from that by allowing the student to purposefully engage and explore in courses that they otherwise wouldn't have had room for in their schedule. The other piece here, too, is we did talk to different groups and held some small focus groups. I use what's called pizza with the principal. Part of that's because I like pizza, but we had students come in, and in these three random student-focused groups of nine- three random student-focused groups of ninth through 12th graders, here's what the students liked. They liked having that additional option in their schedule by adding an eighth block. They favored having the consistent amount of time each day for ELO. The students favored the idea of having one ELO teacher. Currently, right now, you'll recall, there are two, an ELO A and an ELO B. And the reason for that is we, we need to offer a planned period for the teachers, and we want to do that. So half of our teachers during that student seminar, that ELO, are on plan for ELO A, and then the other half are on plan for ELO B, which is what causes the large numbers of those student advisories and requires students to travel between ELO A and B. The students liked that they would be able to have access to all of their teachers during one ELO period. So right now, what happens in ELO A, and, and I'm just going to tell you, our teachers, if the student comes to, for help, they're going to help them. But if they're making copies and they're not available, or they're, they're meeting with another colleague during that time or attending a 504 or an IEP, they're not accessible to the students all the time. So, so what it's done is it's kind of crunched that a little bit. The students like the fact that they'll be able to access all of their teachers during one ELO period, and under the current plan, that's not, that's not always possible.
Where we are right now, if you look at the screen, what this, what this does by adding that extra block, the top set of boxes, the 1, 3, 5, 7, the 2 and the blank, that blank space right now is our ELO block. So on gold days or white days, every teacher has a class during that time. What that does is that keeps those classes smaller during those days, because everybody, every teacher is teaching during that time. Our odd days are bigger because we have only 75% of our teachers available at that time. So by going through and adding a block every single time, so we have a 2, 4, 6, 8, and a 1, 3, 5, 7, this will bring a little bit more balance to our class sizes. So instead of having a day where you have small classes and then the next day you have large classes, now they're going to be a little bit more even. This, by adding that extra block also for the students, this is an opportunity where we can eliminate some of those hard conflicts in schedules. Where a student who is highly artistic and they want to take vocal, they want to take band, but they also want to weld, now, essentially, now they have an open period, they have an extra block, they have the opportunity to explore some of these new CTE programs and really dive into some of these art classes and other electives as well. Since we're not adding a, any graduation requirements, this truly is, here's an extra opportunity to take something that you either you're passionate about or something that you want to explore before you leave our buildings. And as we're bringing on new certificate programs with the CNA, the, the emergency sciences, I mean, here's a way that not only do we get to support these programs, because now students don't have to make the choice, "Do I do CNA or do I do, do I do art?" Now you have the opportunity that potentially you can take both. And we are able to go through and balance class sizes. And on those, those even-numbered days, we are hard-pressed when it comes down to it. If we have teachers gone, those are hard days to find subs to get them covered. So here's another opportunity where we have a little bit more balance in ways where we can get those classes covered.
A couple of things that came out in the conversations with elementary principals, but also just across the district, when we're having, just kind of helping each other learn about their own schedules and their challenges. The substitutes, at the, in the last two years, one, we, we've really struggled with finding enough substitutes. And I think that in, you know, in education in general, keeping teachers coming out of the pre-service programs is a challenge in and of itself, but especially here in the last two years. And again, part of that is when there is not a block of time at the high school that is on the gold days or on what I call the even days, where a teacher has plan, we're not able to pull a person over to sub for another teacher who might just be gone for one block for either a staff development session, or they had to leave one block early before leaving for an activity. And that really does impact elementary and middle school, because it limits the pool of substitutes that they have to pull from. So in kind of keeping with that, that's, that's the other part is the, the hope is that this will help alleviate the demand for substitutes district-wide by allowing greater ease for elementary and middle school to have access to the subs that we're able to help try to cover in-house during emergencies, but also if it's just one block. That's something that's kind of unique with, at the secondary level. This also does help our district. I know all of you have been working very hard and making your way through the KISA rubrics and some of the workshops that the board has had. And a part of the Kansas Education Systems Accreditation requirements, as you're seeing in those rubrics, they're extremely lengthy. What we're noticing about that is as we are touching on the graduation rate, the post-secondary success, the social-emotional learning, we're seeing the power of what that individual program of study has on our students and the need to be able to, to, to work through those, those pieces of the puzzle in our career cruising program with our, with our advisories. It carries so much for our students. One of the takeaways I had recently in talking with a couple of parents, there are so many opportunities for our students, which is a wonderful thing that they have. And, you know, I know that communication is always something that a school district, a school is always trying to do. Part of probably 99.9% of the work of, of our school is to create coherency, so that people understand our programs and can take advantage of them. That has been what the biggest, probably powerful thing of the IPS, the Individual Program of Study, is, is, you know, giving our, our student, they hadn't, they now have that ability to dive in and maximize those opportunities. One parent told me, "You know, my student isn't ready to know what they want to do when they're in high school. I'm sorry, Mr. Stevens, I'm, I'm not buying that." And my response to them was, then at least let them know what they don't want to do. And it's better to have a plan, even if it's not the final plan, than to have no plan at all. So as we talk about that and build that relationship with the parents through the advisory with our students by having those smaller ELOs, you start seeing some of these other pieces of the puzzle fit together. And as, as you know, one of the cornerstones on the KISA rubric is relationships. Looking across, Mr. Showman and I met on March 16th with the faculty. He met with Central and I met with South right at the same time at 7 o'clock in the morning, and we, we went through a lot of the information that we shared with all of you, and then just asked them. And the question really was, that was posed, was, "Do you want us to move forward, forward with advocating for this proposal? We understand that, you know, we're not the final say on that, and we're, we're trying to garner, what did they think about it?" And a lot of the, the power in that process, I always looked at, what, what, what did those that voted no say? And I'll kind of unpack that a little bit, but those that voted yes overwhelmingly, I think what I'm seeing with this data is, is indicative of what our staff is struggling with. They need to be able to have that time to give meaningful feedback to our students, to have those smaller advisories, to build relationships with students, to help guide them and give them opportunity to learn a little bit more about the exciting programs. It has been a very busy last four years, and it's a good type of busyness, so to speak, because our students are able to, to maximize and have all these opportunities. But it does require all of us to learn about those programs. And that, that was a takeaway from, I know in our staff development sessions and reflecting on conferences where we, we tried something a little bit different, that was a takeaway. Staff members said, "You know, we, we got to keep learning about all of the, even though I don't teach that area or I'm not in that program, I need to know about it, because my relationship with a certain student could very well motivate them to try that out and to know about it." And so we're trying to make sure that we're communicating and we understand all those pieces. But what I'm seeing here really is the need for us to, to kind of set and look at what is working and what isn't, and be pragmatic, pragmatic and try to make some changes. And so what we're bringing to you is just some, some feedback from our staff. There are pieces of this that we'll have to unpack and learn about as we do. And I, I would just go on to say, and I'm sure Mr. Showman can, can echo this, again, this is the product of a lot of different voices and a compressed amount of time. So I ask you to give consideration to the proposal. If there are any questions you have, we'd be happy to take them at this time. I'll pull that schedule back up so you can see it.
Does anyone have any questions? Anne?
15 minutes less for a class is a lot less time. What, and your, your English, your math, your core classes, seems like they would really miss that time, but, so I'm sure you've talked about that. Talk to us.
Yeah. What I would, I'll just add in here, what, what this is probably going to impact, the, the content in, in teaching a 93-minute block. As a former teacher of, of teaching in a 93-minute block, what I would tell you is, you really try to, to just leverage every single minute of that block, to make it as engaging as you can. And built into that time is independent work time, where you are, you're giving feedback, you're kind of walking around and you have those opportunities. But, but to plan for a 93-minute block versus what a lot of the schools in our, in our other districts and neighboring districts do with a 52-minute plan or 52-minute block all-day schedule, it requires a different set of skills to do that. And so probably what we would look at is, in terms of the instructional side, that's still being preserved. Toward the end of the block with the independent work time, we're, we're moving that into another option for students to have, but also giving them some of that time every day now in their student seminar and their ELO, to have access to, to recapture that lost independent work time that you see a lot of it, that's towards the end of the block. So, you know, you don't, you don't obviously lecture an entire 93 minutes and do well with that, with that type of pedagogy. So having those activities kind of bundled in, in chunks of 30 is, is pretty common in what you see, and then it's broke down into, into more parts. So the way we look at it is, yes, you lose some of that on there, but you're also trying to recapture some of the time period toward the end of that long block and reallocate it to another, another option for the students in the schedule, as well as the time during ELO that they now get every single day.
Any more questions? Jim?
My question is, I, having a son who is at South and also at the tech school, I wonder how this schedule coordinates. And knowing where he's at right now, one of the struggles he has is hitting that ELO. And one thing I wondered is, and you've probably gone through this, but I'm just thinking, I know he's there in the afternoon, and there's other students who are there in the morning, and that would adjust that. Would it be possible to have one of those ELOs in the morning? That way, you've got an ELO option for all the, the students regardless of how that schedule works.
Yeah. I, I think what I, what I would say to that is, and when, when we put this proposal together, we've been working through the articulation agreements that we have, because we have so many of them. We've got, we've got different kinds of agreements. And what this would allow us to do is, even with the ELO where it's at, we're still able to leverage opportunities for students to take that class in the morning or in the afternoon. Now, some of those are also, they change every year based on what the college can, can do. And so I, I can't say that there's going to be a perfect solution for that, other than we have really dove down into the weeds and looked at that, because what we don't want to do is do something with a schedule that's going to remove options in the namesake of having options for students. And so there's, there's a lot of different possibilities, looking at 16 or, excuse me, 15 different school districts and researching what their schedules are. Almost all of them have some kind of combination of a student seminar. What I thought was interesting is we had, let me see here, there were five of the school districts, overwhelmingly the majority of them are on block schedule, but five of those school districts have eight options for their students that are on a block schedule. So I think, I think that it's, it, it could be half a dozen one and the other in terms of allowing those opportunities for the students. As long as we're meeting the needs and the articulation agreements with the, the post-secondary schools, we're, we're probably going to be okay. But I will warn you that no matter what our schedule is, we're always going to have to be making kind of some adjustments and changes. An advantage of putting an ELO at the end of the day, and we've been back and forth on this, we've moved it in the, the morning, but, but at the end of the day, what we've noticed, too, is students who are involved in extracurricular activities, teachers who are leaving, it does help minimize some of the loss of instruction time at that time. So it, you know, like I said, it goes back to that quote, if you can have whatever you want, but you can't have everything. So as you look at it and put it together, I think we would learn. What I would say to that point, if we did see that something wasn't working under this proposal, that we wanted to make a change, the biggest shift in thinking for us would be going to a six-of-eight, and then after that, working to find out what, what is, what's going and, what's going well and what isn't. Almost all of the student seminars, though, that are built in the 15 different school districts, and these districts include Andover, Ark City, Bishop Carroll, Bueller, Derby, Eldorado, Hutchinson, Junction City, Mays, Manhattan, McPherson, Newton Valley Center, Wichita Heights, have some kind of combination of a student seminar either at the beginning or at the end of the day. A lot of them have moved it to the end of the day, too. So it's kind of, it's a 50/50 thing.
Yeah.
But if we could still give them that opportunity, even with it at the end of the day, then we're also able to pick up that advantage of, of minimizing loss of instruction time for when the, the teacher has to leave to go coach or, or do an activity.
Yeah. The ELO is a great thing. That's, that's the one piece I see, though, is if you've got a student who's in tech or somewhere else, they, they lose that whole piece of it.
Well, and that's what we, on the current schedule, we still kind of face that if a student has that morning thing. So again, it, in looking at which, which way it worked best, it would, and also by having just the, the one, that's also how those class sizes are able to shrink. So we looked at, can we keep the kids in class as long as we can before they have to leave for, for an activity or a program or an event? And how can we maximize that, that end of the day where they can build a relationship and in that smaller group? That's where they get better connected with their peers and with at least one, you know, advisor or mentor in the building. And they can do it quicker in that smaller, smaller group setting.
One thing I was going to add on there, if, if, you know, the student were to take that class in the tech school at the end of the day, and yes, they miss out on an ELO, let's say. One advantage to that is the other side of the coin, and that is that they are able to not miss an opportunity or an elective that might be a singleton class, as I call them, that are scheduled in the morning, because they would be missing that for ELO. One of the drawbacks to ELO and the student seminar in the morning time right now, and this is something that I, I think a little bit about in terms of optimal learning time, that is in the morning. And right now during ELO, I would say, yes, we have students that are pretty productive, but I think those students would be productive no matter what. But it's also a lost opportunity for optimal learning time in the morning, where we're not offering a class during that, during that time period, because it is ELO. So we're, we're trying to kind of, you know, see what, what works. And what I would tell you is, I, I feel like with our articulation agreements, one of the things we could probably reach out to our post-secondary institutions and see, much like we did when we shifted over to this schedule, can we get it to where that student is still given an opportunity for ELO? Currently, right now, we do have students that are in band that lose their student seminar. And so I was talking to, and I asked her if I could use her name, and she said I could. So Sophia Landauer yesterday came to our AP Advanced night that talks about our classes and whatnot, and she said, "You know, that would be huge to have an ELO." So I, I understand completely if they're, if they, if they miss that, that chance to have it, because they're at classes. And I would, I would also say that our, our students under the current schedules encounter that, too, unfortunately.
Carol?
Gentlemen, do I understand that you're proposing this as a trial?
That's correct.
For, for one year?
Yeah. One of the, the, I know that the question on graduation requirements, by not adding graduation requirements for this pilot year, we're still able to, to have the opportunity to step back if we feel like it isn't working to the degree that we need to. So what this allows you all to do is to, to support a pilot and hold us accountable. Let's look at, how did that work? And if we need to step back into what we have, we know it's a known, we can do that without locking everything down. By once adding requirements, you, you don't go back. And looking across the 15 school districts that I researched, I can tell you, the range is from 23 graduation requirements to 28. There is one school district, Mays, that has 28 graduation requirements, seven school districts with 26, three with 25, two with 24. And looking at that, all of the six-of-eight schedules are very comparable to what we have right now. I think they're 25 to 26. And it, and some of those classes that we do require to enroll in, like financial literacy, have been added in those school districts. Now, I do want to warn you that some of the online enrollment guides I looked at were dated, one year old on a couple of the websites, so I don't know if those reflect the, the current year or next year, but it was just a, it was kind of a survey of what we could find.
Any other questions? Gary?
Curtis, I think you answered my question in an answer to an earlier question, but there are some music classes, et cetera, that meet during ELO. That's going to be a thing of the past now?
I think we have to step back and look at what our, our building needs to do. One of the advantages, and I guess I would just say this, and I talked with Mr. Creer, who I know does a, a class during that time, with that eighth option, we may be able to alleviate the need for that. I, I I, I know students struggle a little bit with, yeah, I need to go see this teacher and I know I'm in this group. And so I think we, we can certainly schedule certain times. One of the benefits of having student seminar every single block, or excuse me, every single day, is on this green day, we, or on your odd days versus even days, odd days may be the days that we do as special. So we can use that time and, and kind of schedule it out so students know what to expect. It might not mean that they're meeting every single ELO, but right now, they're not meeting every single day anyway. So there would be some opportunities that we could explore. And I think that that's where, as principals, we step back and say, okay, staff, students, what do we need? What's going to help meet our needs? What this allows us to do though, is to have that flexibility. Right now, that time's pretty tight, because it's only every other day. And so some weeks you have three, some weeks you have two. If a teacher's gone for an activity, if we have a snow day, if we have something happen that they can't get access to that teacher, it might be almost a week before they have a chance to see them. So I think we can find ways to, to work through that. The biggest hurdle I see is getting, getting the six of eight put into place where the ELO is every day, and then being able to get that feedback and input to structure it. And I feel like we can do that. I feel like we can get everybody there.
I agree.
Yeah.
One other then is, how did you come up with 46 minutes for the ELO? Was that something you got from other districts? Was there a lot of discussion among your faculty? An ideal amount of time?
What, what I would tell you is, is the 46 minutes, when you're, when you're looking at it, right now, that's about what we have for ELO. If you look at ELO A and ELO B, we have 93 minutes for both A and B together, but 45 minutes is about what a teacher has. There, there's probably, I mean, I've looked up some research, I've never found anything that says this is a definitive amount. I do know that if it's 20 minutes, it almost becomes too short to do anything. So then you're trying to keep them with you and engaged, but you can't get through the information you need. I'm well aware of how little time 30 minutes is when we're doing staff development in the beginning of the day. You can't get those deep conversations. So 46 is where we start. Looking across those other districts, most of them are in that ballpark. I think I saw one that was 93 minutes, and I can tell you, 93 minutes is, is too long at the end of the day. And pretty much sure that anybody that's taught a 93-minute ELO at the end of a Friday is bound for sainthood, so.
Any other questions?
Madam President.
Were you going to make a proposal?
I was indeed.
Okay, I would just like to say something first.
You may.
Okay, thank you. So let me just paraphrase a little bit and interject if I've missed something. So students benefit, they would get an extra class if they wanted. They would have a more personal relationship with students and the teacher in ELO, because it's smaller. I see the lunch hour is still about, or the lunch, not hour, the lunchtime is still about the same. The requirement for classes is still 24. And students in general, you feel like the ones that you've talked with feel good about that because of their choice, and they would have that ELO time. Okay? And teachers would have time also to have dialogue with a student, meaningful dialogue, especially since it's every day now. Substitutes would be easier. Another class could be added that a student would be excited about, and a teacher could, would be available to accommodate that. And IEPs, tho, those kind of things, there's built-in time, better built-in time for collaboration about a student, that kind of thing, instead of running around trying to gather that time. So those are all of the advantages. Did I miss anything?
No, I, I just, I did want you to know on the lunch, it's 78, there's 32 minutes planned in there, but the block ends up being about 85 minutes. And part of that is just because our lunch ladies, I talked with them, and they're like, okay, Mr. Stevens, we, we got to be able to serve lunch and reset and clean the tables. And so that's, that's the reason for that added minutes, and we do transition that time. But yeah, you're spot on on everything.
Okay. And the, and the buildings could accommodate all of this, all have rooms, everything. I would hope so.
And we'll even have rooms that have windows and doors. That would be exciting.
Okay. So we're set. So I would entertain a motion.
Well, first of all, I think it's important to visit with the rest of the board members. One of the things that we can do as a board is move something from discussion to action. So it depends on whether or not you all would feel comfortable in doing that. You see any, any issues?
I see follow-ups.
And, and if that's the case, then I, I do have a motion. I would move that we approve the piloting of an eight-period schedule for South and Central High School during the 2018-2019 school year.
I'd second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other questions or discussion?
Thank you for doing all this work to work it out.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for taking time to listen to the staff and the students.
There's a lot of wisdom there.
I think, I think, I think you're on the right track. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried, 7-0. Let us know in a year what's going on.
We will.
I'll count on it. Thank you. Moving on to school board reports and upcoming dates of importance. We'll have school board reports first. Emma?
No report.
Gabe?
Jim and I attended the Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting. There was just some discussion about the upcoming release of the master plan for Salina Parks, and some discussion about changes to tennis facilities at Jerry, Ivy, Sunset, and Oakdale that would impact high school and middle school tennis practice facilities. But I trust those conversations would happen when they need to, so, nothing else.
Okay, thank you. Anne?
I think the only student-related things I did were to stop at the walkout at Central and March for Our Lives at the Caldwell Plaza, and I was proud of our students for the things that went on there. Thank you.
Gary?
No particular meetings, but I've continued to participate in the planning of 305 Live, and thank goodness for fancy software and internet so that we can have collaboration between people in Chicago, New York, Tulsa, Oklahoma, Lawrence, Salina. It's amazing. And then a whole lot of our faculty here, it's amazing, all the collaboration going on, and, and it's going to be a great show. So that's been going on in the background. Not a particular meeting, but every day, there's 15 or 20 minutes of reading and exchanging of information.
Great, that's good. Good news. Jim?
The Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, and then I made a note on here, I actually went down yesterday and purchased my tickets to 305 Live, and I'd encourage everybody to do that.
Yes. Were you the first?
I don't think I was the first, but I didn't want to be the last.
Okay, okay, great. Carol?
I attended the Chamber of Commerce Legislative Session and ended as well. There were some questions about Medicaid expansion, but the bulk of the discussion centered on shock and awe after the study on school finance that was released, and the idea of $1 to $2 billion to bring 95% of our students to graduation. No particular solutions to that issue were discovered at that session, so, we wait.
I've had a quiet couple of weeks. Tomorrow, I jump right into the Chamber of Commerce meeting at 7:00, and Salina Education Foundation allocations at 4:00. Upcoming dates of importance include Tuesday, April 10th, Salina Education Foundation reception at 4:30, and that is our first board meeting in April. And usually, they have it in this room, so come a little bit early. You can have cookies and punch and meet, meet the kids. Saturday, April 21st, Chamber Legislative Meeting, the Chamber Annex, 8:30 a.m. Tuesday, April 24th, Stadium Ribbon Cutting at 4:30. And at that night also, at 5:00, we have a board meeting, correct? And Sunday, May 6th, Retirement Reception and Recognition at Lakewood at 3:00. And with that, I will move to you for superintendent report.
Madam President, just a couple of things I would point out. Yesterday, I attended a safety meeting that, or school safe conference, that was for a school administrator, superintendents particularly. Very affirming that we are doing most of the things that other school districts are doing, more than most, honestly. There's a lot of districts that aren't so blessed that have that bond issue that we had, where we can update our schools. So there are school districts that aren't caught up on that yet. But as far as our processes and our plan, our training, I think we're on the cutting edge on that in most cases. I also, last evening, I had the, the honor of going to dinner with our, the bus drivers and the attendants and the staff from Durham. And even though, you know, they're not officially our employees, I think of them as our extended family, and I shared that with them. You know, they're the folks, are lots of times the first ones to see our students in the morning and the last ones to see them in the evening. So I thanked them for, you know, when they greet their students in the morning and, and tell them to have a good evening in the evening, and they're just some really, really quality people, so we're very appreciative of them. The last thing I want to point out, and Board Member Carol brought it up just a little bit, I took some notes that I got from KSB and USA regarding the school finance report that came out. Of course, you know, there was this trepidation, knowing that the report that this Dr. Taylor did for Texas didn't come out so well for Texas. So our concern was, what's going to happen in Kansas? And of course, she did shock us. But it's interesting how she did it. She did not take into consideration the current school finance formula. That was not part of her effort at all. She wasn't going to evaluate that. Her whole discussion was, is there adequate funding to meet the goals of our district? And the ones that I would point out that I thought were significant, and just, Carol said just a little bit about them, right now, the Kansas graduation rate is 86%. The goal is 95%. Our percentage of students that are on grade level, we want it to be 90%. Right now, it's at 75%. And then, of course, our students that are college-ready, for college readiness, we want it to be 60%. Right now, it's at 30%. So those are significant goals, and that's almost become part of our defense, I guess I would say, at the legislature, because some of them think the goals are too high, and they want to lower the goals. And I guess one of my questions to them is, which students are expendable enough that they think we should do that? And so that's part of the discussion that's going on in Topeka. Just a few things I'd like to point out from this study that I thought were significant. One thing that came out of the study is that Kansas is 96% efficient. And I think that the reason that's so significant is, they did not find any other state that was as efficient as Kansas is. So when I was listening to the Commissioner of Education talk about that, he said the reason it is, even as funding fell, our test scores continued to go up. And that doesn't happen everywhere. But now, this is a sad part of this, Kansas was seventh on overall academic success of our students, we've now dropped a 10th. And part of that is, you know, it's tied to budget, because if your budget is, if your dollars are falling, it's going to catch up to you eventually, because the, I mean, the real power in education is a teacher, qual, high-quality teacher with a student, or a para who's doing supplemental work. And those are things that schools have had to cut. And so that was very significant. The other thing shows that Kansas ranks ahead, every state that ranks ahead of Kansas in student achievement spends more per pupil. Thought that was very important. And this is interesting, because you might have heard some radio ads where they talk about money doesn't make a difference, never has, never will. Well, what the study said is, past history shows academic improvement takes place when funding increases. So that is actual research to prove that that's the case. One thing I would like to point out, just to get us to 90% on the graduation rate, this, that Dr. Taylor said it would take a 9.7% increase, just to get us to 90%. So one of the things that they ask, because we keep hearing this from our legislators, if we got a million more dollars, what would we do with it? And so just talking around with our folks here, kindergarten readiness, we know the power of that. Special education, what we're doing for our special education needs, our students are just incredible, and we can't backslide on that, but it is a really challenge to our budget. Academic intervention, we know that holding students back is not the answer, it's better to intervene. More social workers, career and technical ed, and there's a movement across our state that's getting some traction called the First 15, that any student that is going to be college-bound will have the opportunity to get their first 15 college hours while in high school. So for students that are having economic issues, that they can have a start. And then, of course, something near and dear to us, we're very embarrassed that Kansas is 42nd out of 50 states for average teacher salaries, and we think we need to bring that up significantly. So I would just like to point that out. Last evening, I texted all of our legislators from our area, and they all called me, because we were talking about the bill that was discussed this morning, about, you know, arming our teachers. And I, I really have to speak up well of our legislators. All of them called me last night and wanted to talk about this. So I really give them a lot of kudos on that. And I think the important thing about that bill that was discussed this morning that was coming out of the Insurance Committee, it didn't come out of Education, or the other ones, it came out of Insurance Committee, is that they were trying to force the issue by taking the power away from school boards to determine whether they would allow someone other than SROs in their buildings with a gun. And this was trying to supersede that. So talking to our legislators this morning, one of them called me while she was sitting in the discussion, she said, there's a huge amount of, more against it than for it dramatically, so, we'll have to see. They adjourned with no action from that, so. Madam President, that's what I have. Are there any questions?
I understand that there were a lot of parents who were opposed to that. I heard a news report last night, parents very upset about that particular bill, so it's not just educators who are going, please, no guns in the classroom. Anyway, difficult points.
Okay, thank you very much for your report. Our executive session, we don't have personnel, we do have negotiations. So I need a motion for us to attend to executive session for negotiations.
How long?
How long?
15.
15 minutes?
Okay.
Eight, 15 minutes? Start at 10 after? 12 after? Who'd like to jump in?
Oh, I've got the sheet.
Do you want me to roll the dice? Gary?
That's good.
I move that the Board of Education go into an executive session at 6:12.
Okay.
For, did you say 15 minutes?
Yes.
15 minutes for the purpose of discussing employer-employee negotiations because if this matter were discussed in open session, it might jeopardize resolution of the negotiation issues, and that the Board of Education reconvenance opens session at 6:27 in the board conference room.
Second?
Second.
Gary and Anne moved in second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Well, she carried 7-0. We will move to executive session.
Is everybody so shy?
Thank you for coming.
Didn't want to do the math?